Meeting for November 10th will come to order, please. Roll call.
Mr. Abraham.
Present.
Mr. Galt.
Present.
Mr. Rhodes.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Kayler.
Present. Tonight, I have asked Captain Burgess to lead us in our invocation. Thank you for doing that for us. And pledge of allegiance tonight is Meg Hancock. She is a Paducah Tillman Senior and always, she's one of our regulars. And we really do thank you, Meg. Captain Burgess? If you'll stand, please.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening as your poor humble servants. We ask that you be with all present here today, especially our elected officials, as they try to do the people's work in an honest way. We ask that you be with all here, that they safely return to their homes this evening. We ask that you give all of us the... Give us our safe passage home and everything. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ, your most precious Son. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager, are there any additions or deletions?
There are none.
Tonight, we have a swearing-in ceremony for our police officer recruits. You'll come forward.
Mayor, Commissioner, Commissioner, City Manager, thank you all for this evening. As Judge Colton Back comes to the front of the room here, I'm going to read a quick bio of all three of these individuals. You all have already voted on them, but for the ceremony this evening, I want to remind the audience a little bit, or tell the audience and remind you all a little bit of who they are. First, in the middle there is Danny Slack. Danny is now a resident in Paducah, Kentucky, but he comes to us from Castor High School in Castor, Louisiana. He received his bachelor's degree in 2013 from East Texas Baptist University in Marshall, Texas. And most recently, Danny worked for the Pasadena, Texas Police Department where he was an officer with their agency for roughly 18 months. Danny is married and has a young child here in the back of the room. Second on this side, I'm sorry.
May I jump in here?
Yes, you may.
After Chief Barnhill gives us a little bio, would you turn around and face the audience then? If you'll just go ahead and turn around. They can see you.
That's right. Closest to me on this end is Conrad Golson, West Paducah native, graduate of Lone Oak High School in 2011, and a graduate of West Kentucky Community and Technical College with an associate's degree in 2014. Most recently, Mr. Golson was working for West Kentucky Community and Technical College. Mr. Golson is single with no children. And last but not least, on the far end is Nicholas Rollins, 23, also a Paducah native, Lone Oak High School graduate, and a graduate of West Kentucky Community and Technical College with an associate's degree. He is also a member of the Army National Guard Military Police Company out of Murray, Kentucky. Comes to us from Brandeis Machinery, was his most recent employer as of a couple of months ago. Mr. Rollins is married with his wife and one daughter in the back of the room also. Judge Colton Back, please come forward.
Do you want us to face you, or do you... If you would, if you can. Face Robin. And we're going to give you three oaths. Two of them are short, but one is constitutional, one is the police officer oath, and one is the gaming oath. If you would, if you want me to... solemnly swear that you support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this common law. And be faithful and true to the common law of Kentucky so long as you continue as citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully execute the best of your ability to be office officer for the Paducah Police Department according to law. And you solemnly swear since the adoption of the present Constitution, you being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within the state nor out of it, or have sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, or have acted as a second in carrying a challenge, or aided or assisted any person thus offending or helping die.
I did it.
All right? The police officer oath is one sentence. Do you swear that you will faithfully discharge the duty of the office officer for the Paducah Police Department?
I did it.
And then the gaming oath is to be solemnly swear that you will endeavor to the best of your ability to detect and prosecute all gamblers and others violating the laws of this game. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioner, for your benefit and for the audience's benefit, and also on TV, I will add the comment that with the addition of these three new officers, that brings our staffing to 75. We are allotted 78 officers, so we're still in search for more qualified candidates. If you all know any, send them our way.
All right.
Thank you.
So tonight, we want to recognize the winners of the Veterans Day Essay Contest. So Cindy Byrd and Cheryl Bendix will come forward, please, and they are the Daughters of the American Revolution Chapter here in Paducah. May I go on over here?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I would like to let everyone know that this year, we had 1,211 essays and pictures to judge, the most that we have ever had. And we have eight of our winners here this evening. And I would like to call up for the first-place winner in grade kindergarten through second is Marla Campbell. She's a second grader at McNabb. And she's going to come up and show her essay. Okay, just stand right up here in the middle. Show everyone your essay. Okay? And what her essay says, "How can I be patriotic and brave? We give thank you to armies, and I could join ROTC at Paducah Tillman. So maybe we have a whole soldier here. Go on over to the mayor."
She'll have to key this thing.
Congratulations. Our second-place winner is Ruvah Dembo from McNabb Elementary. And Ruvah, please come up. And I would like you to go to the middle here and show everyone your beautiful picture that you drew.
And she says that she would... I can say the pledge of allegiance to our flag. Take this beautiful picture, and please go on over to the mayor.
Our third-place winner is Benjamin Trevino from Concord Elementary. Benjamin? What grade are you in? Benjamin's in the second grade. Benjamin, please show everyone your picture.
He has an army man who is saluting.
In grade three through five, we have Drew Morrow, who is a first-place winner. And Drew has an essay that he would read for you.
Thanks to veterans for their sacrifices for us. Do you know what veterans did for us to be a free country? I will tell you their sacrifices. Their sacrifices helped us to be able to do what we want. We need to thank a veteran, we need to thank them for all they have done for us. Veterans lost many things in their lives when they chose to serve their country. They lost time they could have spent with their spouse, children, family, and friends. Some veterans lost their lives serving our country. I wouldn't have done what veterans did, would you? They also have done many other things to make our country free. I will honor these veterans for what they have done for us. I hope you honor these veterans too, as they have made our country free. Be sure to thank a veteran today for all their sacrifices that made to keep the United States of America a free country.
And only the first-place winners will read their essays. Carson? Could you please go over to the mayor? Carson's a fifth-grader at Clark Elementary. Our third-place winner is Daniel Goldsby. He's in third grade at Heath Elementary. Go over to the mayor. Our first-place winner in grade six through eight is Luke Wyatt from North Marshall Middle School. And Luke is going to come and read his essay.
My vetory is titled, "Why Are Veterans Brave in the Sacrifices They Made For Us?" In our world today, where would we be as a nation without our great veterans? To me, a veteran is someone who served in the military, whether it may be the Navy, the Air Force, the Marines, Coast Guard, or any other special forces. They are freedom fighters, answering the call of duty, responding to our prayers, but most importantly, they have fought for their country, the United States of America. Each veteran dedicates their lives for our freedom. But each veteran has a different reason for their dedication. But the main reason still remains the same. They have fought for our freedom. And with this comes a great deal of bravery and sacrifice. And with this bravery and sacrifice, we have the freedom to walk down the street and meet a friend or to meet a neighbor. We have the freedom to be protected by people who want to harm our country. We have the freedom to speak in public, and we also have the freedom to travel without being scared. By a famous quote by one of our very own presidents, Dwight D. Eisenhower once said, "I do hereby call upon all citizens, that November 11th shall be known as Veterans Day. On this day, let us solemnly remember all the sacrifices and those who fought so valiantly on the air, on the seas, in the air, on foreign shores, to preserve our heritage of freedom." And with this, let us continue to march on to promoting and enduring the freedom so that their efforts shall not be in vain. When I think of Veterans Day, I think of what all they have done in the past. I think about their bravery, sacrifices, and their love for our country. I most importantly, thank them for their sacrifices and bravery. With this, with great honor and pride, we salute you. Thank you.
From Paducah Tillman, we have our first-place winner, a 12th-grader, Palmer Stroop. And he will read his essay.
This is called, "Respect Do Our Veterans." See, my grandfather died at the age of 93. I was blessed to know him, and he was proud of his service in World War II. And he served in the Army Signal Corps in Europe. I heard his stories, but shamefully, I actually grew tired of hearing them. See, that war was over 70 years ago. Oh, 70 years ago. Most of my classmates and friends don't realize that we're actually at war today. See, it's on the news every night, but we just happen to tune it out. See, in order to give respect, we must know their stories and never forget them. All Americans should study the military history of our country and know the sacrifices made for our freedoms. Americans are serving every day, sacrificing educations, time away from family, putting off starting a family, and even risking their lives just for you and me. When they return, we must respect them in every way possible. Our government must provide resources like health and mental services, or education and job training to start life as a civilian. Our communities must support and encourage these veterans, assist and thank them in every way, flying the flag, writing letters to soldiers, supporting veteran groups, and treating each vet with the respect they deserve when you meet them. I'd simply forgotten my grandfather was a decorated Army veteran until he died. We drove into the tiny family cemetery to be greeted by two members of the 101st Airborne Division who saluted the hearse as his casket was carried to the gravesite. They remained at his side the entire service, and then presented the flag to my aunt. At the end of the service, elderly veterans from the American Legion fired an alarming 21-gun salute off in the distance, standing over the graves of my ancestors. See, this was an amazing sign of respect for the service my grandfather did for our country. It filled my family's hearts with pride. See, this is the type of respect all veterans deserve, whether they served during war or peacetime. See, we must make sure that they do not have to wait till their funerals to receive the respect they deserve.
At this time, this is all the winners that we have here. Two of our high school students will not be here this evening, and that would be Peyton Patel, who's a 10th grader, and also Anna Grace McGee. And they're all from Paducah Tillman High School, so if we could have a photo, an official photo. We'd like to thank all of the schools who participated this year. Thank you so much for instilling a sense of pride and patriotism with your students.
Captain Burgess is here tonight for an announcement of the distinguished veteran. And he's also... Are you the chairman of the Veterans Day Committee?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Commissioners. I am here as chairman of the Veterans Day Committee to, first of all, welcome all of our visitors here today. And I hate to try to follow that, you know, there's some very good essays there today on it. Mayor would like to invite you and the council to come out tomorrow for our Veterans Day Parade. This year, we will not be starting down on Second Avenue. As you are probably well aware, we'll be starting right across the street at Dolly McNutt Memorial Plaza. And I understand that we'll have some bagpipes around 10:15 to start it off, and the rest of our ceremony will kick in, and right at 11 o'clock, we will start the parade on it. Along with the invitation, I'm honored tonight to introduce you to this year's Distinguished Veteran of the Year Award. Command Sergeant Major, if you will step forward, please. If you would like to bring your wife, she's more than welcome.
She's going to take pictures.
She's going to take pictures, okay. Mayor, this is Command Sergeant Major Scott Garrett, who is this year's distinguished veteran. I'll give a brief on him, a little bit more tomorrow. Sergeant Major has served about 30, almost 31 years in the military, has accumulated about 35 or so, you know, declarations. The Legion of Merit being probably the highest one that he's got on it. He's also a professor out at West Kentucky Technical College, Community and Technical College on it. So at this time, I'll let him say a few words. If you want, you don't want to hear me anymore. And thank you again for inviting us.
Thank you, Captain. President, sorry, Mayor. Thank you, Captain Burgess, Mayor, City Commissioners, family and friends. My beloved wife, Kristy, put me in for this, much to my surprise. I'm extremely honored and even more humbled by this. People who know me find it uncharacteristic that I would have been lost for words, but I virtually am now. But I am not only simply proud of this award, I'm very proud to be a part of this community. And what warms my heart more than words can tell are seeing the winners of the essay and picture contest. That's truly what this country is all about, community and the people in those communities being involved. In the military, we always said, "One team, one fight." That is, we're all on the same side, and we always want the same goal. Well, there's not a fight here, but we are one team, and we are working for the same goals to make our communities, our community better than it is. I also want to say that although I'm extremely fortunate, not only to receive this award, but fortunate to still be here, I did none of the things I did alone. My brothers and sisters in arms always had my back. Thank you. God bless. God bless America.
And Scott, I'm here tonight to present you with an award, to present you with a Duke of Paducah tonight. And I know it's really a small award with all of the wonderful awards that you have received throughout your lifetime, but it's very important to us. It may be, it may be small, but it's from the heart. I hereby confer this honor with all the rights, privileges, and responsibilities therein to appertaining, and testimony whereof, I have caused these letters to be made patent and the seal of the city to be herein to affix, done at Paducah the 11th day of November in the year of our Lord 2015. It's only the 10th, but we can pretend.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a very, very great honor. It is not a small honor, and the fact that it comes from the heart, here in this community among family and friends makes it even more special. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And tonight, I have another special award. If the parents of Master-at-Arms Tyler W. DeReza will come forward. This is Todd and Kelly DeReza, and they're here tonight to receive an award for their son. On August the 8th, 2015, Harrison, age 13, from Marshall County, had a horrible dirt bike accident at West Kentucky Motocross in Lowes, Kentucky. While on leave from home from Naples, Italy, Tyler DeReza was one of the first on the scene. He put his first aid skills that he learned in his training in the Navy. Harrison was unconscious and did not respond to any of Tyler's questions. Harrison was lying face down, and Tyler had someone elevate his feet 90 degrees due to him going in shock. Tyler listened to his lungs, heard gurgling, knew he needed to be moved, that he didn't need to be moved. So when he started to wake up and try to move, Tyler encouraged him to be calm and that help was on the way. Due to the bleeding, he propped his head up with his own arm to keep him from aspirating. At the time the state trooper arrived, and eventually EMS, Harrison was airlifted to Vanderbilt Hospitals. So because of the training that Tyler had in the Navy, he was able to stabilize this young man and really saved his life. So I wanted to give Tyler a Duke of Paducah for his efforts with this young man's life. To all to whom these presents shall come greeting, know that what is it? Master-at-Arms Tyler W. DeReza is named a Duke of Paducah. I hereby confer this honor with all the rights, privileges, and responsibilities therein to appertaining, and testimony whereof, I have caused these letters to be made patent and the seal of the city to be herein to affix, done at the 10th day of November in the year of our Lord 2015. And I know Tyler's still in Italy, but you can have this framed for him, and when he comes home, he'll have a framed Duke of Paducah. Thank you. So tonight, I want to talk a little bit about the efforts of HUD and Veterans Administration to address homeless veterans in the Paducah-McCracken County area. In early 2015, I signed the mayor's challenge to end veteran homelessness in Paducah. And Paducah has been officially, has officially achieved the federal standard to end veteran homelessness in this city. A system is in place to identify housing and place veterans in housing. And I would like to recognize some people here tonight, and then I'd like to ask Christopher Taylor to please come up and say just a little bit about this program. He drove all the way here from Louisville and has to leave immediately and drive home, so I really appreciate you being here. The Homeless Veteran Program stakeholders attending the meeting tonight, and if you will, please come forward, I'd like to recognize you. Paducah Cooperative Ministry, Heidi Schoenrich. Am I pronouncing that right?
Scheinrich.
Scheinrich. Is Heidi here tonight? And Candace Mallory. Marion VA Center, Brenda Foster. And Pamela Yost. Housing Authority Paducah, Jacqueline Floyd. Donna Bennett. And Renaldo Ornduff. Mayorman House, Dana Sanderson. Marissa Young White. Centerstone Supportive Services for Veteran Family Program, Amy Jones and Jerry Ford. Kentucky Department of Veterans Affairs, Carol Livingston. City of Paducah Section 8 Housing Program, Danny Fugate. So these are the folks that work with the Veterans Program, and I just want to thank each one of you. You've done a great job. We've been very successful here. So just have a seat there in the front, and I'm going to have Christopher come up and talk a little bit about the program and the success of it.
City Commissioners, citizens of Paducah. I'm happy to be here today to represent the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development and Secretary Castro as we move into our next 50 years of service. We're also happy to announce, as Mayor said, that Paducah is actually the first city in Kentucky to receive the designation of the Federal Board to End Veteran Homelessness. That's a huge accomplishment, and it could not have been done without the partners sitting in the front row. Really quick, what the challenge that she signed on to was, it looked at local officials across the state, across the country, to make a commitment in their community to end veteran homelessness. Now, why is this important? In my own words, no man or woman that has served this country should have to come back home and sleep on the street. We're happy to announce that of the 10 people that were identified in the 2014 point in time count have actually been housed. Now, ending veteran homelessness doesn't mean that we won't see any more veterans on the street. That's not the federal definition. What's more important is that we have a system in place to identify those veterans, and once they've been identified, we can get them into permanent housing within 90 days. That's very important, because we've actually achieved that standard here in this community. Obviously, this is an ongoing effort, since... Obviously, this is an ongoing effort, since new veterans are still returning home. But achieving this goal means that we've found new effective ways to help veterans find the housing they need, they deserve, and most importantly, the housing that they've earned. Mayor, I want to thank you, and I also want to congratulate you for this important milestone. And we look forward to working with you and your community to ending all homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do have a proclamation tonight, and I'm not sure who wants to receive this tonight. For Christopher. Our proclamation, veterans are national heroes, and Paducah appreciates the contribution of veterans and active members of the military, and whereas Paducah is committed to honoring all veterans and servicemen and women in all branches of armed forces, and whereas we encourage all policies and programs designed to ensure that every military veteran has a safe and affordable place to live, and whereas there are more than 1,000 homeless veterans across the state of Kentucky, and whereas Paducah has joined the mayor's challenge to end veteran homelessness in an effort to solidify partnerships and gain commitments to end veteran homelessness in Kentucky cities, and whereas the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, the Kentucky Housing Corporation, have collaborated to create 870 permanent housing vouchers for homeless veterans in our states, and whereas Paducah residents are encouraged to recognize the individuals and organizations who are working to aid homeless veterans and other veterans in need. Now therefore, I, Gail Kayler, Mayor of the City of Paducah, to hereby proclaim Tuesday, November 11th, as, that's not right, is it? It should say Wednesday, shouldn't it?
Yes.
November the 11th, we'll send you a new one. As Homeless Veterans Support Day, and witness whereof, I have a hearing to set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed. So we will get you one with the corrected date on it. Should we just mail it to your office? All right. Go ahead and take this one, but we will send you a corrected one. And thank you, I really enjoyed working with you. And all of, all of you here in the front row. And I want people in the community to understand that this, this isn't just for Housing Authority projects, it's for anyone out there that has a house, an apartment, that can rent to a homeless veterans, because they are fully vetted, they have a social worker that works with them, they're a very reliable renter to have. So I think everyone needs to understand, they need to feel very comfortable with renting and using these vouchers, and the VASH vouchers especially. And Danny, anyone that wants to know more about this, Danny, would it be okay if they call you at the office and you can get them in contact with the right people? I appreciate all the work you've done, Danny, as well as everyone else here. Thank you very much. So I know you need to get back to Louisville, right? Commissioner Abraham, you have the minutes tonight?
I move that the reading of the minutes for November 3rd, 2015 City Commission Meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the City Clerk be approved as written.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
I have an appointment, whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint, I hereby appoint Albert Parker as a member of the Municipal Housing Commission to fulfill the unexpired term of the late Ronald Rudolph. This term will expire July 22nd, 2016.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in appointing Albert Parker as a member of the Municipal Housing Commission.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Fowler Black, Bill Ranzouli, Joe Binberry, Hal Sullivan, Michael Sims, and Steve Irwin as the members of the City Hall Schematic Design Advisory Group.
Need a second?
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
So this, this group will get to work November the 17th is the first meeting for the group?
Yeah, Rachel will be in for a two-day exercise and likely to want to meet with the group both of those two days, so that'll be the official kickoff, and we anticipate at least two of those two-day visits by Rachel during this schematic design phase. So we're excited to get that underway and grateful for the willingness of the people that were appointed tonight to participate and provide valuable input into the process.
Okay, thank you. Under motions, Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the following documents be received and filed. Quick claim deed with Aaron Prather for 622, 626, 630, 634 South 12th Street and 1115 Ohio Street. Contracts and agreements, grant agreement between the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet Office of Highway Safety and the Paducah Police Department. Engagement letter with Plante Moran for consulting services. Agreement with Midway Trailer, Inc. to purchase one trench trailer. Agreement with Paducah Ford to purchase two half-ton 4x4 pickups. Agreement with Linwin Motors to purchase one pickup half-ton 4x4 SSV. Agreement with Linwin Motors, purchase three new compact SUVs. Luther F. Carson Four River Center, Inc. financial statements for years ended June 30th, 2015 and 2014.
Seconded.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Municipal order, Commissioner Abraham, please.
Upon the recommendation of the City Manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah ordered that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Do you have any questions, comments?
No. Thank you. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Under ordinance adopted, adoption, Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to accept funds for a Renaissance on Main grant for the City of Paducah's Artful Bike Racks Project. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to execute all documents necessary with the Kentucky Department for Local Government for a Renaissance on Main grant in the amount of $5,000 for the Artful Bike Rack Projects located in the downtown historic district.
Second.
I believe this was introduced last week, so I won't go into the details unless you have some questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
No, we're just excited.
So, so are we, so we're ready to get, get started on them.
Okay, City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Ordinance introduction, Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 126-72, Homeless Shelters of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends Chapter 126, Section 72, Homeless Shelters of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, as to bring this ordinance into compliance with the mandates imposed by KRS 65.870, as may be amended.
Second.
Basically, this amends the way that weapons are handled in our homeless shelters. In our Code of Ordinances, it had read, weapons are not permitted on the premises. We struck that and replaced it with federal and state firearm control laws shall be strictly enforced on the premises. There was also some redundant language that was stricken from that ordinance as well. I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, approving an agreement for professional engineering, construction, administration, and resident inspection services associated with the Riverfront Redevelopment Project Phase 1B, and authorizing the mayor to execute said agreement. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City hereby approves an agreement for professional engineering, construction, administration, and resident inspection services with Bacon Farmer Workman Engineering and Testing, Inc., associated with the Riverfront Redevelopment Project Phase 1B, in an amount not to exceed $126,380. Further, the mayor of the City is hereby authorized to execute the agreement.
Need a second?
Second.
Mayor Commission, I'm pleased to bring this to you this evening, that marks us getting this project underway and completing the project as it has been adopted by you all. We, our contractor is poising himself to move on this, and we look to have a pre-construction meeting next week.
Okay.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Is, all right, so this will be construction, and you all, no, you didn't talk about last week, this is a construction administration? I mean, is that what?
It's, it's multiple on that, Commissioner Rhodes. For example, construction administration means you have checks and balances, you also have construction observation, whereas you actually have a man on site or personnel on site that's observing the work, making sure it's done in accordance with the plans and specifications. Also, it includes testing. For example, there's soil testing, there's also positioning of the piles, reviewing shop drawings, you know, like we're having, we're having structures like gangways, floating structures, those kind of things that are being submitted to us, they need to be reviewed by the engineer record to make sure that that is what, you know, that they're in compliance with the plans and specifications.
We're gonna get what we paid for.
Exactly. There's more, there's a lot to this than just what's, I guess, the brief description that we can, we can put in those Agenda Action requests.
Would, would this originally been, and I'll be on the commission, would JJR, would they have really originally been part of this construction administration?
Yes, they would have.
So did we, did we pay them to do this and then?
No, because we never got to this stage with them.
That would have been an additional contract, correct?
Yes, yes. It was, it was not part of their original contract.
Okay.
Their contract only took us to the procurement stage.
Okay, so, so this is new money, this is, we did not contract them to do this and then come back, and so they, okay, so this is new money, this is what we've been reserving for.
When it comes, I guess, Commissioner, when it comes to the city's money, I think the professional community will find that I'm about as tight on, as the bark on a tree. So when we monitor that, we, we squeeze them on that, and we make sure that we're not double spending. We, we have several drafts of those contracts, and we, we talked about what is and what should and shouldn't be in those contracts from, from this point to that point, and then so on.
I just, when I said not being here, I just was sort of getting some more of the background.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Before we, let's see, we're down to City Managers Report.
Did you want to do something first?
Oh, you can go ahead.
Okay. As we indicated last week, activity has resumed at 432 Broadway. The effort of the next few days will be to construct a temporary shoring up to protect the adjacent building during demolition of the corner building at 43, 432 Broadway. That, again, will be followed by demolition of 432. And the last chapter of the book will be constructing a permanent shoring up of the wall of the adjoining building. So it's good to see that activity is back underway there. We hope it goes without interruption, and we all look forward to that project being finished and the streets being reopened and traffic resuming. Do you have something, Rick?
With regard, I wanted to add something that we just learned this afternoon, today, with regard to Oliver Church Road, that I hadn't had a chance to share with you, Jeff, and that is that P&amp;L wishes to make their rail, at-grade rail crossing correction or improvement for the new road next week, and we will close Oliver Church Road to through traffic Monday through Friday of next week. So that's something that just came up, and I wanted to give enough public awareness of that, and we will, we will be sending out a PSA for that. And Jeff, I'm sorry I didn't have a chance to share that with you, but I want to take this opportunity to share that with the community.
Will they replace, because right now it has that dip in it, when you, so are they gonna raise the track?
They will flush it. Over time, a railroad, a railroad crossing goes down, they'll, they'll bring it back to grade and flush it up, but they'll also make it wider as well. But I wanted to
Thanks.
...bring that up. Thank you.
Okay, we have several staff members probably on their way back from Rome, Georgia today, a group that went down there to visit and learn and glean from a community that is in the process, or has recently completed the implementation of the new software product that we are in the purchase of, purchase, in the process of purchasing. A lot of objectives for that trip, but we certainly are going to have a better understanding of the implementation of complexities and challenges that are ahead of us. Just refresh your memory from the presentation a couple meetings ago by Greg Mueller and the group, that it's a three-year effort that should, at the end of that time, bring about the results in terms of full implementation, if it's managed correctly. And part of that management, as was pointed out that night, is having somebody in place that can monitor that, ramrod it, make sure that it is progressing the way it needs to. We certainly don't want to miss out on opportunities, advantages, efficiencies that the new software will bring about. We don't want departments moving at different paces and imbalances between departments in the implementation and the eventual service. So that is going to be a staffing issue for the city. It's something I'm looking at consulting, and I want to consult with each of you at some point in time about that, but I think it's a critical issue that we are going to have to address. It's a big investment in the city, it's a big conversion, it's a huge step forward, and we want to make that step in a very timely fashion and in a way that allows the total organization to move forward and progress in terms of the quality, if you will, of the, the services that we provide the public. So I'll have more to say about that at a future meeting. Tomorrow, the Convention Center Corporation is meeting to consider the request by the city to incorporate the financing for the relocation of the pavilion into the transient room tax funding umbrella, if you will. Mayor Kayler, Steve DeLillo, and I will be going to that meeting to make the presentation. To refresh your memory, we are on a pathway to relocate the pavilion and use it for another eight to 10 years at a minimum. And given a little bit of time here to look backward, and more especially, I think, look forward, we think it's altogether appropriate to approach the Convention Center Board about the prospect of officially bringing in the pavilion as Convention Center space and allowing the transient room tax, of which 2% of the 6% local transient room tax is statutorily dedicated to funding acquisition of capital facilities. So it's appropriate, I think it's timely, I think it's altogether proper that, that be considered, and we will be addressing again the Convention Center Corporation tomorrow, seeking their recommendation to the fiscal court to take on ownership of the pavilion and to recommend the use of the 2% of the transient room tax that is already in place, this is not a two, a new tax, and the 2% of the 6% that is statutorily dedicated to Convention Center space in downtown Paducah. So we hope to So we hope to come out of there with an affirmative recommendation, but again, that is going to take place tomorrow. We have been in consultation with the Judge Executives' Office.
He'll be there also.
And he will be there, and we've been in conversation with both Bob and Doug for a number of months now. We've not been doing this, looking at this in isolation. We'll also be presenting some information on, relative to the option that was looked at for investment in the former showroom lounge space, and explaining what we looked at there, all of which you know, but we're sharing that with folks that aren't necessarily as up to speed with it as you are. But again, that on balance proved to be a very expensive option, and without investing in additional space in the bottom part of the facility was not going to, in and of itself, meet the needs of the quilt show. So all those things will be brought together in a presentation tomorrow, and again, we'll be seeking the recommendation of the Convention Center Corporation to the fiscal court to effectively assume the pavilion as a Convention Center asset and recommend use of a portion of the, 2% of the transient room tax going forward to finance the relocation. That... Any questions about that, comments?
What time is that meeting?
Right.
Is it 3:00? 3:00, yes. At the Convention Center, of course.
And I know we've talked a lot about veterans tonight, but tomorrow is Veterans Day, and I just wanted to mention a group, and I hope I'm pronouncing this right, Kunitai, and it's Kunitai USA, and it's called As Many and As Quickly As Possible. And this group works to bring the remains of American servicemen, as well as Japanese, home, and they were instrumental in bringing Private Carnell back to Paducah. So they work strictly on donations, they're supported entirely by charitable donations, they're completely independent from the US and Japanese governments, and as they find these servicemen and identify them, they go to the war memorials where they're listed as missing and scratch through their name to show that they have been found. They make a mark through their name, you know, they have been found. Currently, they're working in Saipan, the Philippines, and Guam, and I have never seen anyone so totally dedicated as the two people that I have talked with several times, they're both Japanese, and totally dedicated to this mission of theirs. So I just want everyone to know about them, and I have thanked them personally, and they will be back to Paducah again. So... Any commission comments tonight? Any public comments tonight? Meetings adjourned.